I was overachiever.
Here.
Okay, that takes us to approval of the agenda.
We approve.
Second.
Jason and Barb, discussion on the agenda. City of None, council please vote.
That's close.
Aye.
The judge approved takes us into the public hearing. The public hearing on FY 2021, 2022. Maximum property tax levels, anyone here to speak in the public hearing? Karen, did we receive any comment? So seeing none, and with no comment received, we will go ahead and close the public hearing under resolution number seventy-four, twenty, twenty, twenty-one. Resolution approving the fiscal year twenty, twenty-one, twenty, twenty-two maximum property tax dollars for the city of Nevada, Iowa.
We approve.
Second.
Brian and Sandy, discussion? Okay, seeing none, council please vote.
Aye.
One and two in at large.
Aye.
Aye.
Are you looking for me?
You already said it.
Hey, eleven pounds of the buttons.
Yep.
Okay, so that will lead us to Idol Five, which is a presentation from the Austin Peters Group recommendation. So Elizabeth Tarko, everybody was with us, and you can go ahead and address the council.
Good evening, I'm Karen, I'm unable to start my video, are you, can you see me? Hello? Okay.
On mine, it says the host has stopped the video.
Right now? Let me try. There I am. Thank you. Okay, are we ready then?
Aye.
Was that a yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Beth Tatarco, I'm with the Austin Peters Group, are you able to hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. I thought I would just talk with you for a few minutes about a project we've been engaged with, the staff and all the department heads and everyone, really since September now, it's hard to believe, and talk to you about the project, what the findings are that we found as a result of the study, and just walk through some things regarding that. I'm gonna share my screen, and so, there'll be just a moment. Are you able to see that?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Always nice to know that it works. So, we began this project, it has four parts, and I'm assuming everyone has a copy of the summary, and so I'm gonna start really on page five, if you have a copy in front of you, that would be helpful. And I'm just gonna walk through kind of a little bit of background and overview of the study, and talk about the findings. So, our firm is based in Kansas City essentially, which is Overland Park, and I'm here in Fort Collins, we were transferred here a few years ago, so I'm a little further out west these days, but did most of my work in the Midwest, and including city, including Iowa and other cities in the Midwest, Missouri, Iowa, Nebraska, really much more in the Midwest than Colorado. We've done about a hundred and forty, a hundred and sixty projects similar to the city of Nevadas, and we've been doing this since nineteen ninety-eight. Some cities you might be familiar with in Iowa that we've worked with include Iowa City, include Clinton, include North Liberty, Marshalltown, and Knoxville has joined us recently. This is a little bio about the principals, the owners of the company, and it's myself and Becky Crowder, it's just a little bit of background information about us, not terribly important, but if you are interested. Both of us have master's degrees and have been working in this field for since nineteen ninety-eight. I wanna talk about the scope of the project, we were asked to do three, or do four things in terms of the study. One was a classification and compensation study, a review of job descriptions and updating those. Many of those had not been looked at for several years, and it was time to give them a refresh and a relook. We also did a Fair Labor Standards Act review, and those recommendations went to the city administrator, to Jordan, and then we are finalizing some pieces for performance evaluation. We worked on reviewing your tool, we brought in some new items, made some adjustments, we're gonna do some training with department heads, and we actually do that next week on March first. In total, there were fifty-two job titles, positions that we looked at in the study. So I'm on page five, like I said, I'm gonna give you a high-level overview of the steps involved in the study, and then I'm gonna dive in a little deeper on a couple of items and walk through those along with the recommendations, and then I wanna take questions and hear what questions you all have. So, first of all, for an overview for the study, I need to back up and really thank the employees, the department heads, the, especially the city administrator, Jordan and Karen. They were integral in terms of the study, in terms of getting things rolling. And let me just give you an example, you had one of the highest response rates that we've ever had in terms of salary surveys. The cities that reported back to us and responded was extremely high, we had twenty-three respondents, that's phenomenal. And the reason we had so many is, I reached out to Jordan early and said, would you mind making some phone calls and getting involved with us, and he said, sure, I'm happy to. And that's why we had so much response, Jordan gave a friendly phone call, and sure enough, that paid off, and we had a lot of response. So, thanks to Jordan and the staff, all the department heads were also very helpful. So we began with interviews with all of them, those were done by video, we had a couple telephone interviews as well. They filled out questionnaires on their end, which were very lengthy, and, and then we did some follow-up with them, they provided video, photos, lots of material, and then we followed up with all the department heads as well regarding their interviews and that process. The next step that we took in the project was to look at equity across the organization, and so on page five of your material, you'll see what that looks like, we ranked all the positions in terms of seven different factors, and those are internal equity factors. That helps us establish from low to high all your positions and where they belong in terms of decision-making and supervisory responsibilities. And that's important because that's one step of the process that matches up with the market side, and I'll explain that here in a few moments. But on page five and six, there's that seven factors that we looked at, decision-making, supervisory, which is very important, knowledge, what's the knowledge required to do the job? And that could either be on-the-job training, or training and education and certifications, or even a combination of both. As you all know, many positions in a city, you are hired in and you're trained for the job. Water operators are a very good example of that as well. So there's knowledge, budget impact, contacts, what kind of public communication and public contacts do people have? And then on the next page, physical and working conditions. So seven different factors that we looked at for internal equity. Then we did some follow-up with department heads, they helped us a great deal in terms of positions and clarification of those jobs, and the nature of those jobs, and that takes us to page seven of your materials. So we worked with department heads, then the next step in the process was those market peer salary, cities, organizations that we surveyed regarding what are their wages? What are their general compensation issues like health, retirement, leave issues, and other items, so we surveyed them for all of those details in terms of what their compensation structure was like. On page, that takes us really to page eight of your materials, and I'll talk in a few minutes more about who's on that list in just a second. But once we got all the, the pay data together, then we began to develop your pay ranges, and we could look at that based on the internal equity and the external equity, which is the market, and we could begin to develop those pay ranges and begin to make some assessment in terms of where you are in terms of the market. The final step, of course, is talking with you all, and sharing our findings with you, and of course, taking in additions and details that you have. I wanna make a comment about the cities or organizations that were in the survey. What we looked at, you'll notice there are quite a few on here. What we looked at were organizations that had positions that were like yours. And so when a city received a survey from us, they received a very large detailed survey that had a job summary of what your positions do, and then they were asked to rate how well their position fit the city of Nevadas, and then they told us what their wages would be in terms of minimum, maximum, and actuals. And so, what we're trying to do when we did the surveys, we wanna get the best result we can, we want those apple-to-apple comparisons. Now, you'll notice immediately, I'm sure, there are a couple of very large cities on this list, for example Ames and Ankeny. We did not compare department heads with those large cities, we found comparable positions if they had an assistant director or something like that, working to get similar scope and supervisory responsibilities for organizations. But the rest of these communities, very similarly sized in terms of departments and employees and responsibilities. The next item I wanna touch on is the development of pay ranges, and that is described in a little more detail on page nine of your report. So when we put together the pay ranges, we're looking at the market data, and we're looking at positions in, in Nevada from high to low, of course, as I said before, the internal hierarchy, and we're working on what those pay groupings or pay amounts should be. We work to position you at the sixtieth percentile of the market. And what that means essentially is that for, if you take ten employ, uh, ten employers or ten payers, I guess, for a position, employers is a better word, and you line them up from lowest to highest, what the sixtieth percentile means is that four employers will pay more than you, and six will pay less than you. So that's what the sixtieth percentile of the market is. And I wanna describe a little bit, you know, as, as a city, when you have to train and retrain employees or fill new positions, that can be very, very expensive. We found that when cities, especially cities, when they're at the sixtieth percentile of the market, they begin to, it's a much more steady pace, they stop losing employees, they stop having turnover, and as you all know, for example, in a police department, I'm sure your public safety director can tell you the exact statistics, but it costs approximately thirty percent of an annual salary to train an officer, and I actually think it's probably a little bit more for police these days. Anyway, so we wanna, we want to turn back the tide, we wanna use the sixtieth percentile so that we retain employees. One comment about employees and their treatment, if they were below the new range minimums, they were brought up to the new pay range. And if they were above that, or above the top, we didn't propose pay decreases, that wouldn't be productive. And we can talk about how those are handled, but you didn't have any of those situations anyway, to my recollection. So again, if they were under the pay range, we brought them up to the new pay range. I wanna just turn to a summary of the findings, and those are on page ten. We have five findings here. The first one is to move people to the new range minimum, the total impact here. And then, finding number two, and this did not include volunteer fire employees, by the way. Then, pardon?
We lost you on the first finding.
Do you want me to go back through it?
Yeah, please.
Okay. So the first finding is to bring all employees up to the new range minimum. Now, some people were already being paid at the new range minimum, so that's the first finding. The total cost to do that among all employees is eighty-four thousand dollars. And those recommendations are in table three, we have the current ranges, and then we have the proposed ranges. Cost that cities, and in particular Nevada, would need to look at in terms of moving employees through the pay range based on their time and position. And this is called a compression adjustment, and let me explain what I mean. Oftentimes, cities will bring up the pay, starting pay, without adjusting other areas of pay. And before they know it, they may have employees making the same.
You must have MediaCom.
Let me send a message.
Or Comcast, one of the two.
Comcast, yeah.
So that's finding number two, so there's two separate costs, you've got the range minimum, and then you've got compression pay. So the total for the compression is seventy-five thousand, one hundred and ten dollars. Again, this doesn't include volunteer fire. And again, I'm on page ten of your report. The third recommendation that we would make, or findings, is that every year Nevada looked to adjust pay, and I think you've done a pretty good job of that, you've been on track. That has helped you in many, many ways, making those annual adjustments, quite frankly, meant that those other two numbers weren't as, as dire as we've seen in some other cities. And so every year, on that annual basis, July first, as an example, you would adjust overall the pay ranges, and you'll be making annual employee adjustments as well. And that's something you already are doing. Then number four. Many cities in the survey are still working to put back or bring back health insurance coverage. You'll find that Nevada is doing well compared to their peers in terms of health insurance, and there is a table on page eleven that demonstrates this, table, table two. And so when we looked at health insurance and benefits, you're doing very well in terms of single coverage and family coverage. It was more difficult to compare your vision and dental because your package really varies by individuals, and, but we did report out on table two, what your peers are doing in the market. So you'll see in table two, you'll see a column for Nevada. For example, health insurance, that coverage for an employee, you're paying approximately ninety-eight percent of their coverage. A, the peer group average is eighty-nine percent. And you'll also see what those employer monthly amounts are, and you can pat yourselves on the back, somebody's doing a great job here.
Okay. Give me the last one. Oh, no. Okay. Let's let her back in, she's doing outlook of the consent agenda. So on that, any item may be removed for separate consideration.
We approve.
Second.
Brian and Dane, discussion on consent agenda. Okay, seeing none, are you ready for a vote? Okay, council please vote.
Aye.
Looks like she's back.
Yeah, looks like she's back home.
Okay, consent agenda is approved, and if Beth is back, we'll hand the floor back to her.
I am so sorry, I don't know what happened.
Your, your, your picture was frozen for a while, the audio had been kinda choppy, so hopefully it'll reset and be able to.
Were we on the summary of findings?
Yes.
Okay, that's good news. How about if I just talk from the report and share my theory? I think that, I'm almost finished. What I was saying is health insurance, you guys are doing a great job. It was more difficult to compare your vision and dental plans, but you really are, you're where a lot of cities are trying to get to at the moment, and so that's good news. The one thing that we did find is that in terms of leave on page twelve, if you look at your report, you'll notice that vacation leave for Nevada compared to peers is lower. That's something we would suggest that you all take a look at, and, you know, work over time to make some adjustments there. So that would be one area of suggestion in terms of what those days look like. The final recommendation, volunteer fire pay, we can tell, you know, fire is very different, very unique when we talk to other cities, and Karen really helped me a great deal with this as well. We went back to cities that did not have ambulance services tied to their fire department, and really tried to drill down on what they were paying in terms of reimbursable or on-call rates. And you'll see those in table thirteen. I have to say, though, that everyone uses a little bit different terminology in terms of Nevada uses reimbursement per call, and peer groups usually use something like paid-on-call or rate per call. Now, they're doing the same thing you are, they are reimbursing for expenses, but we found that there, those rates are higher, and that's something that you could look at in the future. Those are the main things, the other thing we ask cities to help us with on page thirteen and fourteen was just give us a summary of additional items, are you paying for certifications or shift differential, or any of those kind of things? And so we've made a listing of what those responses were, so that you can take a look at those. That kind of, that concludes the recommendations that I have, and I think at this point, I'd like to hear what kind of questions people have, and see if I can address those.
Any questions for Beth? I can see them. Do you have any questions? Not seeing any questions. Thank you for your report. I think that was helpful to walk through and so everybody understands the information. And this doesn't require any action on our part to accept.
I would just do a motion to receive and file.
Okay.
Motion to receive and file, second.
Hey, Jason and Dane, discussion? Aye.
All right, thank you so much for having me, and again, thank you to Jordan. I think he and your department heads and employees, they were very, very gracious and helpful throughout the whole process.
Thank you very much, Beth.
All right, thank you. Have a good meeting.
Thank you. Are you ready to vote over there? Okay, council, please vote.
Aye.
Okay, that is approved, which takes us to the public forum, which is time to set aside for comments from the public on topics of city business other than those listed on the agenda. No actually be taken. And first in the public forum, we have a report from John Hall of NBC about Business Retention and Expansion Report 2020.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm going to go ahead and pass around the BIA report for 2020.
Can you email me a copy of that? Not, not now, but after the meeting or tomorrow or something.
Counselman. I appreciate your time to see me. So the Business Retention and Expansion Report is something that is compiled by the Ames Economic Development Commission and is really a cornerstone of our economic development programming. So this is our efforts to visit and contact our key employers and key business industries really throughout all of Story County. So what you've got in front of you is the entire Story County report aggregated in some key data. And then there's an insert specifically pulled out for the Nevada Economic Development Council and features Nevada. So we conducted 13 visits with businesses last year. As you can imagine, it was a bit of a different year as a result of COVID. Typically, these visits would occur in person, running one with the kind of key executive of the company to get a really true understanding about what's going on with the company in a very confidential manner. So what you not see in the report is anything specifically calling it an individual company other than a few words that we recognized as it's, it's designed to be entirely confidential. So a couple of key findings that I thought would be relevant for you all today. On another specific piece, products and services. A hundred percent of companies in Nevada that we surveyed have introduced new products, services, or capabilities over the last three years. This is really, really important as we think about the survivability of companies here in the community and continuing to grow and expand. Seventy-eight percent of those anticipate new products and services in the next two years, which continues to speak to that. On that bottom, I note that thirty-four percent of our respondents report plans to expand in the next three years. We're very closely with those companies and help them chart that course. And then thirty-four percent of respondents have a succession plan in place. This is a cause of concern for us, that only forty-four percent of surveyed companies have noted that. And so we'll be deploying services to try and work to bring that number up. The final piece, a couple of pieces I note are on the COVID impact side. So a component of the study this year did include some COVID-specific survey questions. Supply chain will note that over half of our companies had some level of supply chain disruption and are continuing to struggle with supply chain issues. But seventy-eight percent of those have returned to full normal operating hours. And then one thing of note that I think has accelerated the community, seventy-eight percent reported communities' technology infrastructure has been adequate for dealing with COVID-19. Now, I'd note that a lot of our large major employers are serviced by telephone companies, so they've got fiber optics. I would note that some of the respondents who did not, were not satisfied with the technology, were not in that service territory and are looking forward to fiber optics. So with that, that's a very high-level, very quick overview. I'd answer any, entertain any questions that you all might have about the report, the process, or what we're doing with it. Please, as you review it, do not hesitate to reach out with any questions or concerns you might have. Brenda Dryer in our office manages our BIA report, so likely if you have a question, I may not have the exact answer, but she would be the person that we're connecting with, so. Thank you. Did you want to introduce the, so I'll give a second item for public forum. It wasn't on the agenda. But it's a check presentation, so as you all are aware, we've had a couple of land sales in the East Business Park. The arrangement with NBC and the city for those land sales is that half of the proceeds from those sales come back to the city. We appreciate that partnership. Truthfully, to be able to put in the infrastructure and build out a business park like that wouldn't have happened without the city's initial commitment to that. That business park is getting increasingly full with only one marketable lot that the NBC controls remaining out there. So we'll have to begin the process of thinking through that next strategy for the next commercial lot. But with that, we did sell two lots in the fourth quarter of 2020. So I have a check for two-hundred-and-nineteen-thousand, nine-hundred-and-two dollars and eleven cents for the city for being our partner in this. I'll present it to Beth. Sarah, did you want to? Well, you're the president. You should probably be in the photo.
Marla says they're proposed.
Yeah.
Okay, Marla says here. Very good.
Smile big.
Yeah. Where's that smile from?
Smiles.
You can see her smiles, right?
All right, thank you.
One thousand dollars, I ought to be smiling.
Give that to you.
Awesome, thanks.
Thank you, John, for the report. I think it's informative, and I think the data in this is helpful. I'm going to make sure Luke gets a copy too, so you can check it out. And also, it's exciting to see the business park almost complete and to think about what's coming next. So I'm sure with our Vision 2040 and further discussions along that with those lines, council will be involved in where we go from here, so and how that might be structured. So the idea is with structure, the city put in a lot of infrastructure, and we've got some of the proceeds from the lot sales as they occurred, so that's where the check came from. Okay. Public forum. Nobody else here to speak on the public forum, and I wasn't aware of anyone that wanted to do so online, so we were ready to close the public forum. Yes, there's ordinance number 1016, 2020, 2021. Chapter 66 load and restrictions, second reading. Move to approve?
Second.
Jason and Sandy, I believe. Okay, Jason and Sandy, any discussion? Seen none. Council, please vote.
Aye.
Okay, that is approved. Takes us to Old Business Park. Approved vertical scope of services, H R green for sanitary mapping and amount not to exceed eight thousand dollars. Can I have to approve?
Barb? Sorry.
Jason, discussion? Seen none. Council, please vote.
Aye.
Okay, that is approved. Takes us to City Business A. Resolution number 75, 2020, 2021. Resolution supporting Story County's immediate opportunity rise grant application for Verbio Nevada LLC's project. And John Hall is going to brief you on that request.
Good evening again. So this evening, in front of you is a resolution asking for your support on a rise immediate opportunity grant through the Iowa Department of Transportation to support Verbio expansion that is currently being contemplated to the northwest of their existing facility. They acquired land to the northwest across the railroad tracks. And in order to service that facility, they're currently traveling about a mile on railroad on 220th Street. Originally, the county had had a set of plans put together. They ultimately did not bond and refer with those plans, but they did have plans to pave two miles of 220th. And though those plans are not officially scrapped, they are kind of sitting on a shelf. So we approached the county when this opportunity for an expansion came about, about pursuing a rise grant which would bring in about a half a million dollars into the project, which is estimated at one-point-two million in order to pave about one mile of 220th to serve the Verbio facility. So Verbio is looking at doing an expansion that would add ultimately another 38 jobs. It'd be about eighty million dollars in capital investment. They'd be doing an ethanol production facility. But the unique component is they'd actually be producing additionally to the ethanol natural gas, renewable natural gas similar to their existing facility. But this renewable natural gas would pump back into the facility, lowering the overall carbon intensity, making it a much more marketable asset in particular, particularly in markets like California, which is importing ethanol and renewables from out of the country. So this would make Nevada and Verbio that much more competitive in those markets. So they have at a future meeting an ask for local incentives to superstate application for assistance from Iowa Economic Development Authority. But this is the ask for the Iowa Department of Transportation resolution. Jordan, do you have the specific numbers regarding what they were looking for, what the county was looking for in the partnership on this?
For the partnership, for the twenty-two percent of BR share was one-hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand. I believe the second amount was around five to six hundred thousand. That was an amount that we haven't really discussed yet, but we did discuss the one-seventy-nine previous to this, and it is something that may be willing to do.
Yes, and Jordan related to the larger amount out there. So part of this conversation with the county was, what if the county went ahead and did the original two-mile project like they had talked about? They had asked at that time, and again, if the city in Nevada would be willing to consider paving the remainder of, was that six-hundredth there? Six-hundredth north of the railroad tracks up to 220th. So just north of Kiko up to, up to, then to 20th. And so that would be the larger number if the county is wanting to consider that. In the interest of getting the rise grant put in and ensuring at least one access into Verbio on paved road, the intention is to move forward with that project in the immediate term, but there may be a future conversation with the county about the remainder of that pavement out there. So in the interest of getting this, if we did the larger paving project, we wouldn't be eligible for any additional dollars from the Department of Transportation. So getting at least that one access, getting that paved and being able to support the company is important.
Council, any further discussions or motions?
A quick question, the audio is not coming through great, but we're talking about paving. Our personal end of it is paving six-hundredth from where it goes to gravel up to 220th. Is that the general gist for that one-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand?
And that would be asked by Demuffler over the mic. That would be a second option that they presented to us. But what John Hall is referring to is point twenty-two percent, which would be basically half between five-ninetieth and six-hundredth on the east side. It would be half of that that would, that we would be responsible for.
Five-eightieth to five-ninety.
Five-eightieth to five-ninety. Sorry, I'm over a mile.
All good.
Yeah, so Luke, the first mile is five-eightieth to five-ninety on what would turn into the 13th Street exit off of I-35.
Right, okay. From Hollab's to like Verbio was what we're talking about on the, on the north side of Verbio.
Correct. So particularly that first mile, and then there's a potential and further discussion that maybe they'd go after that second mile that would take it to six-hundredth.
And so tonight, I'd look for hopefully support of the resolution. I think it's worth noting that the county has indicated that they would continue maintenance of that road in terms of plowing and everything with that, even though point two-two of it is in city limits. They're just looking for the assistance on the actual cost coverage of paving that road. Ultimately, the county would take on the risk of the rise. As with any of these systems projects, if the company were to not meet their obligations or something happened, the county would ultimately be on the hook for the rise. They are working through a development agreement with the company for the company to ultimately be on the hook for it. But I think that's worth noting to you all, in the event that this should not happen, but the paving happens, you guys would not have risk other than your portion of that pavement.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve this match for the, it's not really match, but the support of the rise grant application.
A second.
Discussion? Okay, seen none. Council, please vote.
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Thanks, John.
Thank you all. I'll likely be at the next council meeting with some further information on Verbio's potential expansion.
Great. All exciting things. And speaking of that, Sarah's coming up for the next one, which is Resolution number 76, 2020, 2021, which is a resolution intent to give it four-point-five million dollars to Nevada Field House project. And I know a lot of you have been talking to me about this for many, many years. So it's now time to put somebody in front of you so that grant applications can be applied for. So Sarah and John will update you on what the things are.
Well, good evening, council. Thanks for the invitation to be here tonight. I'm Sarah Clausen. I'm here wearing the hat of the Nevada Foundation. A lot of you know me wearing other hats, but tonight I'm representing the Nevada Foundation along with John. It's a little bit of the John Hall show tonight, so thanks, John, for.
I swear I'm almost done.
Right.
Almost done.
And thanks, Karen, for getting this queued up for us. I appreciate it. So we felt like, because this resolution is before you tonight, that we owed you this presentation because it's very near and dear to us, and all of you have been involved in it some way, shape, or form. And so in order to make your decision, we wanted to share what we've been sharing with others in the community, other service clubs and other nonprofit organizations that we've presented to. So the Nevada Field House is the topic for tonight. And we wanted to start first with the, just the idea of the Nevada Foundation. This project is really housed within the foundation. And the idea of forming the Nevada Foundation was, for those that remember, the toke dollars, the gift of the toke dollars, when those ended, we really didn't have another vehicle in which that the community could leave gifts and leave dollars that could go forward to community projects such as a structure like the Field House. So that was the whole intent of the Nevada Foundation was to create a new vehicle for that legacy in our community. And so the, many of you are familiar, if not on, the Nevada Foundation. So those, do you have this on your screen? Is this on their screen, Karen? Do you see that they can talk?
They can talk on, so yeah.
Oh, okay. I just want to make sure. I just want to read it for you. So I just wanted to make sure. So the directors are listed there. I won't read through them. But ultimately, the objective of the foundation, so we can provide community betterment and contribute to the growth and vitality of our community and to improve the quality of life in Nevada for our residents. There goes. So let's talk a little bit about our Nevada journey. As you are all well aware, we've sustained tremendous growth over the last 20 years in Nevada. And some of you even go back as far as creating the Vision 2020 document that we are now rewriting and creating a new vision for for the next few decades. So that Vision 2020 document, basically all the projects or all the concepts were developed. That's why we've revisited and we have started with 2040. And the Field House was really the final piece, and we've been calling that that capstone project, that final, the, the final piece out in Score Park and within the community. And we have that vision. You all see that Score is thriving thanks to our community. You all see that Score is thriving thanks to our community and our Parks and Recreation Department. But we still have a huge demand for adult and youth programming in our community, so this Fieldhouse will be that capstone. So a little bit about the story, just kind of walking through that that history.
To an advanced slides.
Oops, sorry. Thanks, multitasking. In sixteen, there was a joint effort with our city folks and with Story Medical to talk about a Fieldhouse, what what would be that project. And it was really, it came out to be a pretty unattainable dollar amount that that project would would require. And so the concept was then just moved to city leaders to talk about and develop a more affordable plan. And then the idea was revisited again in eighteen and Parks and Rec developed a new plan. But again, other budget priorities took precedent and it was again moved aside. And then in nineteen, we started having the discussion again, and our our city leaders had earmarked at the time the four point five million for this facility. And then that's what the the resolution tonight is to consider. So just to give you a total as of today, our estimated cost for this current facility is seven million dollars. John, I'll let you talk about renderings.
All right. Well, I think you guys are all pretty well familiar with the the layout of the Fieldhouse and what it looks like. But it's important to note that a lot of the conversation that we've had with some of the individual corporate donors or individual donors that that we have taken time to meet with and and solicit funds for for the project. This is this is exciting to them to understand how this is going to to function. And a lot of the questions are, you know, what's the the programming going to look like? So being able to discuss that this is designed to be a program-driven facility, not a membership-driven facility. And and continuing to build on really what is a phenomenal Parks and Recreation program throughout the community. And that it really is that Score Park, but indoors, that that is the hashtag scoring door that we came up with very early. And so the the renderings that we're going to see, I think you you all have seen. But it's important to note that for for the folks that haven't seen that, the folks that may be watching this either through Facebook Live or or joining the Zoom. This is this is good information for them to continue to see. So you all are familiar, and maybe not everybody is, that it's approximately forty thousand square foot facility north of, just north of the Fossett Family Aquatic Center and south of the new high school baseball field. How do you want to?
Sure.
Okay.
We kind of know this like the back of our hands. So just to go through some of the specifics of indoor facility, our basketball courts, full-size court, three full-size courts to allow for a range of age-appropriate times. One of the the things that we heard in feedback from what does this facility need or this community need is we have kids that are out practicing nine, ten o'clock at night. And we really need another spot for them to be able to practice so our families aren't out so late. So the the multiple courts will allow for that. Possible open shooting times, we can host games. Central Iowa Rec League is coordinator for our Eastern Story County and then some when hosting activities, tournaments, whether it's basketball, volleyball. And just the the opportunity to allow for growth, you know, this facility has a turf component. And so the the possibilities are endless with what we could do in that turf space. And then just specifically on the turf, the this is really a flex space. This turf has the opportunity to roll up, so we can use the space underneath if necessary, multi multi-purpose activities. So I have an indoor soccer kid. There's an opportunity that we could have indoor soccer and host those types of activities. The schools talked about extending some of their programming, something that they don't currently have. Maybe we could offer in this facility, at least from a recreational standpoint. And just the other, you know, we talk about turf, we're a soccer town, you know, this community has a lot of soccer. And we we can maybe shift to indoor turf if if weather is a problem, we can have some of our kids inside where it's not so much of a problem. Want to touch on playground?
Sure. So one of the important components is we wanted this to be score indoor, we wanted this to be a usable park indoors through throughout the year. So rainy days or snowy days, cold wintery days like we had most of last week. The indoor playground, we anticipate being a a pretty large hit for for the the community. It's important to note that the entire, around the entire playground is is a glass wall. The idea being that if you've got multiple kids, one may be practicing basketball or practicing soccer. The other can be playing on the playground and you can keep everybody within eyesight. We thought this is very, very important for this facility. The commons is adjacent to the the playground area. This is going to be a community gathering space. There's already community groups that are asking when they can start meeting in this space. This would be a nice space for folks that are landing in between tournaments that are happening out there, even during fair weather months. But also then during basketball tournaments or otherwise that may be happening inside the facility. We have the elevated track. This is a a very important component and ultimately goes to support really what I guess Michelle Casabam has coined the zero to one hundred. There's a lot of seniors in our community that that walk quite frequently. As a result of the pandemic, a lot of those walking facilities that they may have used, be it Story Medical Center or the the indoor mall in Ames. Those facilities aren't aren't usable right now. The mall may come back. Story Medical may never come back in that way. But providing an elevated indoor track in our community is going to be a key amenity for for a lot of those folks. Do you want me to take timeline or you want timeline? Okay, timeline. So we're still in the silent phase campaign that will be going likely through March of this year. To date, we've got, it's a little north of six hundred and fifty thousand. I updated a couple of numbers today. Little north of six hundred and fifty thousand pledged into the project from private donations, and that is over a five-year period. So we're asking for commitments over five years. We have a a number of additional asks out there for for substantially more. But the big thing and and part of the reason we're here today is we're looking at the CAT grant. That is a Community Attractions and Tourism Grant through the state of Iowa. The original Score Park did take advantage of this grant through the state of Iowa. We believe with the size and scope of this project, we have an opportunity to to go for a pretty substantial sum of money. I think ultimately, we're going to be asking for nine hundred thousand from from the state in that CAT grant. And we have to show that we've got eighty percent of the funds committed to the project and substantial community support for the project. So that's that's what we're working towards. Those applications will be due in April with funding available in July. We will be launching a full public phase of the campaign, you know, those last dollars in for the project. And that will begin in earnest this spring and into the summer when we can start meeting with more folks face to face. Particularly if we can meet outside on hopefully some good weather days in the future. And then with the anticipation of construction in late summer and ribbon cutting in fall of twenty twenty two.
It's really the end, but so the, yep, we'll just leave it. There we go. So we're here tonight requesting you consider the resolution number zero seven six. The intent to commit four point five million dollars to Nevada Fieldhouse. So that is our request tonight. If you do have questions, of course, we can take those. Tim Hanson is also a great resource. You can catch him later if you have specific questions about the inside of the facility. I do want to note Rosalind Mackey-Harris was our architect, and so they've been partnering with Tim on everything for the facility. But do you have any questions for us at the moment?
It was probably about a year ago, we were out at the open house out at Score Pavilion.
That's exactly right.
We wondered what happened shortly after we did that, so that's why this took so long to get back in front of you. So it was March of twenty twenty that the fundraising campaign was supposed to start, so unfortunately it didn't happen, so.
Would you approve resolution number seventy six?
And Jason, discussion. Seeing none, council please vote.
Aye.
Approved. Thank you both for presenting.
Thank you very much.
That moves us to resolution number seventy seven, twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. Resolution approved at pre-construction agreement with the Iowa Department of Transportation for railroad S fourteen of the US thirty bridge.
Approved.
Second.
Jason, Dan, discussion. Seeing none, council please vote.
Aye.
One more button.
Hey, that is approved, which takes us to nine D. And we have a presentation from Mike Roth, and that's on the professional services agreement for those sort of treatment facility improvements phase two construction phase services, not to exceed two million seventy five thousand dollars. So Mike, you can go ahead and address the council.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. I'll try to share my screen here. I have a very brief presentation to give you a little bit of background information regarding the professional services agreement that's in front of you. Give me a second here. Are you able to see my screen with the presentation?
Yes, you can see it.
All right. So for consideration, we're asking for professional services agreement related to the construction phase services on the wastewater treatment facility improvements, the phase two project, so the building of the rest of the treatment plant. Give you a very brief background regarding what's included in the scope of services. You can see here the organization is H R Green and City of Nevada, and there are three main components to this contract. First being construction administration services, construction observation, and construction testing services. Specifically related to construction administration, that is essentially what you'd call the office effort. Work done by H R Green staff, our engineering staff, our administrative staff, and our technical staff. Many of these people who you don't interact with on a daily basis. They are the folks that are working to go through seminal reviews. They're the ones who attend project meetings with the city and the contractor. They're the individuals who answer contractor questions, review the pay requests, and are members of the commissioning and startup team, which is an element of the scope of services that we're including for this project as well, which would assist the city in actually starting up the facility once we've achieved or gotten to substantial completion, as we're nearing there. The construction administration services also include the warranty assistance. So on this project, per the construction documents, there is a two-year performance period that happens and and carries through for two years after the date of substantial completion. And that effort to support the warranty assistance is covered under construction and administration. Our administrative staff also will be the individuals who are managing the certified payroll. And this is a requirement of the SRF program. The contractor will be required to submit certified payrolls, and those records have to be checked and maintained. And our staff will do all of that as part of this project. Our technical staff will assist with the completion of record drawings for ultimate documentation of the project that will then be turned over to the city at the end of the job and at acceptance. Construction observation scope is the field effort. So this is our technical staff who are providing resident observation. And we've also included an element here within this project for doing some drone aerial imagery. So we have a fleet of drones that we can use to obtain pictures as well as do some video. We can do a bunch of other stuff with our drones. But for this project, what we're proposing is that we would come on a on a monthly basis to do a flight over the project site. So we can then provide some imagery for the use by city to promote the project, to give updates to residents and and others. And a great way to document the stages of the project and completion as we start through completion. Our resident observation services that are included here is a split of mainly full-time and some part-time. So the estimated duration of construction from beginning to end is thirty months. We're proposing a full-time observation of twenty eight months and two months of part-time. So at the very beginning of the project, there's not going to be a whole lot happening that's really going to need someone on-site full-time or even very limited part-time basis. So we've factored that into the overall scope here. So we would have a couple of months where our resident observer would maybe only be on-site a few times during the week. You know, and on as-needed basis. We'd see that at the beginning, and then also once we hit a substantial completion as the project's winding down and everything's getting wrapped up. There would not be a need to have that individual on-site five days a week. Construction testing services that are included, all of these are managed under H R Green but are provided by a subconsultant. Now, these are included are to be provided by the owner, and that was spelled out in the contract documents. And we're doing the same thing for the phase one project. And really what this does is it kind of removes the potential for a conflict of interest where the general contractor is hiring a testing consultant to verify the performance of their work. This, these services are are under H R Green's umbrella and are provided outside of the the general contractor to ensure conformance with the contract documents. There are three main elements of construction testing that are included here. Soils and compaction testing, concrete testing, and rebar placement inspection. All of these tests and services are required as part of the contract documents and their individual elements. And we've included these here at no markup by H R Green, so they'll essentially be our subconsultant with a pass-through to the city. The overall fee itself is a time and materials with a knock to exceed fee. So essentially, the city won't be billed for the labor, materials, and expenses that are used. So H R Green's efforts are a function of really the contractor's efforts on any sort of construction project. So unlike the design effort, which was a lump sum fee, this is time and materials. So if the contractor is not working and not doing their effort, there wouldn't be effort by H R Green for services, and thus the city wouldn't be billed for those. Now, the knock to exceed part is a ceiling that's based off of the defined scope of services that are outlined as well as the planned hours that we have used to come up with how much time it will take our staff to complete all the necessary work related to construction. And those hours are based off of years of experience on other similar projects, as well as looking at other projects to define how many hours it will take us to do the work related to construction phase. Now, this scope and this feed excludes any extra work or effort that would be due to a contractor delay in not completing the project on time or a contractor's excessive or unusually complex request with regard to actually constructing the work or ensuring that they are conforming with the contract documents. Anything that would get to that point would be something that we would look at in terms of discussing an amendment with the city and seeing how those extra costs could be borne on by the contractor themselves. The professional services fee includes all the subconsultants that I've shown include in the scope. And currently, our fee sits at, including the subconsultants, at five point eight percent of the construction contract cost. If you would remove the subconsultant's efforts, that percentage is actually somewhere around five point five percent. So that would be H R Green's efforts would be about five point five percent of the construction contract of that just shy of thirty six million dollars. I'll point out that most construction phase services on projects that fee generally runs in around the eight percent range. A little bit lower when you get to some really, really big projects. But in general, the fee percentage of, based off a percentage of construction is below six percent. In that fee, again, we're based on hours here, and that's what we are billing on. When we look at total engineering hours for the construction. When we look at total engineering hours for the construction administration phase, amongst all of our staff, there's about five thousand hours of effort for the duration of construction. Our resident observation, which would also include those drone aerial images services, we're looking at, no, I'm sorry, this resident observation is actually just for the resident observation, both the full and part-time, looking at six thousand one hundred and forty hours. And then assistance with testing services would be about two hundred and fifty hours. Based off of those hours and the subconsultants' fees, the total fee for this professional services agreement is the two million seventy-five thousand dollars. A real quick reminder in regards of the schedule for construction. Notice to proceed would be the first thing that would happen, and that's scheduled to happen by March the nineteenth of this year. The next major milestone would be to hold our pre-construction meeting with the contractor and other parties. And we would tentatively look at having that the week of March the twenty-ninth. And then work would progress until we hit the substantial completion contract date of June the thirtieth of twenty twenty-three, with then final completion following and having the job completely done by September thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. And then after that, that's when the two-year warranty period kicks in, and that's from that substantial completion date. So we'd be looking at a warranty period starting July first, assuming that the contractor met and completed, substantially completed the work by June thirtieth. That would start on July first of twenty twenty-three and would continue through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. And that's all I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone has.
Mike?
Yes. Yep, go ahead. Does somebody have a question?
I was just saying thank you.
You're welcome.
Let's council have a motion. So we're looking to approve the agreement.
I'll move to approve the agreement.
Second. Barb? Discussion. Council, please vote.
Aye.
It's approved. That takes us to business E, approved city of Nevada administrative policy, street patching, repair.
Will be approved?
Second. Jason, Dane, discussion.
Or something that provoked this?
I think Jeremy requested it. It's just, it's easier on, before I believe they're just using gravel, gravel until they're able to get back in and patch it. So I think this prolongs it a little bit for us and doesn't make it as messy.
Get your mouth open like you're ready to say something.
Just the patches that, like, we got the street, we all have our concrete back.
Yeah.
Discussion. Seeing none, council, please vote.
Aye.
That's approved, which takes us to reports, starting with city administrator.
I have nothing for you unless you have questions about my report or anything else.
My report, I think, is either contained somewhere else on the agenda or Jordan had it on his report in the packet, so I don't have anything additional. Unless you have any questions for me. Council reports. We'll go back to Jeremy, and for staff, I'll come up to the mic so everyone can hear.
Good evening, everybody. Too much. Want to start by saying thanks to the downtown businesses. I committed to it a lot this morning, and just about all the snow was to the street, so it may cling up easier here, we provide a better level of service, so I must say thanks. And hopefully this is the last time we'll haul snow. Some of the guys around town have figured it. If it snowed on a certain date, you only have this many more snows while we're done, so. But, so that's all for streets. The water department, we fixed another water break last week, and they're continuing doing annual maintenance and repairs at the water plant. And the wastewater plant is just doing data maintenance. A lot of problems taken care of, so just doing what they do. That's all I have. Any questions for me?
How are we doing on hiring somebody for the wastewater?
We are going to hire somebody.
How are we doing on hiring somebody?
It's posted. It'll be March first, I think. It closes March first, best calculations. As well as the streets job, we have one at streets, opening a street department, too.
Originally, we had until March first to fill that position with, for the DNR, but I did call them. We did get an extension till May first to fill that, so.
The weight study kind of pushed it back a little bit.
Yeah.
Good things come to those who wait, Jason.
I'm just waiting for your answer.
Thanks, Jeremy. Okay, Director Reynolds.
Hi, Ray Reynolds, Director of Fire and Hyenas. I just wanted to point out a couple of things. Captain Gary Van Sickle, retired Captain Gary Van Sickle passed away this week. He was a captain with the fire department for twenty-three years. He was part of the fire department. He was also on the Board of Appeals for the city. He was in two thousand nine when we had a Board of Appeals. He's very well-known throughout the community and had his fingerprints quite heavily in our fire department. Services Wednesday, the fire department will be present for that, but I just thought maybe keep Chris and Gary, Gary's family in your thoughts. The other thing that I wanted to pass on is the leadership in the city, Jordan, the safety committee is working on developing a safety program for the city. We currently pay close to nine thousand dollars for that safety program through CISO. We're going to be doing a lot of in-house training with our own folks, making attendance more mandatory. So our first training is in March on CPR and stop the bleeding, so we hope to cover a lot of those required CEU classes for our city employees in-house and save a considerable amount of money. So safety teams kind of putting that training schedule together for the next two weeks. We're also going to be working with ICAP. They'll be doing some of the presentations as well, April fourth. Or maybe that timeline that we can get for our regular meetings, first one would be sexual harassment and bullying. So hitting some of those top ICAP presentations that they want all cities to have. So that's what we hope to do.
Thanks, Ray. And while Tim's coming up, we'll go to Larry online.
Let's be good.
Online. We'll go back to Tim.
Okay. Just like to start by thanking John and Sarah for coming tonight and making a good presentation and sharing that project with you. I know you get tired of me talking to you about it, so. Appreciate your support of that resolution, and there's some exciting things ahead in the future with that. So thank you for everybody involved in that. Outside of that, maintenance staff's just been really busy with snow removal and get stuff ready, you know, for spring, be here sooner than we know. And in-house, we're just kind of trudging ahead and working towards what we hope is going to be a a full spring and summer of activities. So we're waiting through training, a lot of continuing ed, applications, employment, that sort of thing. So any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
Director Martinez.
I want to thank Jeremy for the work he did here in City Hall. Place the sleeve, lights, got the timing correct.
Well.
You don't notice it until you notice it, so I want to, I want to thank him for that because it's just been irritating and seeing the lights burn out, so he took the time to get all that done, so I appreciate that. So, other than that, that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
It's Rick. And Larry, I think you were probably dialing on the phone and now able to speak. Maybe not. Okay, Karen.
Just been working with our financial advisor and the bond attorney and getting ready for the second phase wastewater SRF twelve and reinsurance.
Counsel, I'm through, Karen. Hey, Sean.
I've already got it up and most of you's got any questions?
Aaron?
I can report that we did get a tentative agreement with the union last week, so that's good news. And they will have their ratification vote on Thursday, and then it will be before you on the next council meeting. Think you'll be happy with what you see.
Last call for Larry. Are you able to speak?
So, Ray?
We can't hear you, Larry.
All right.
I permitted his phone to talk, but it still must be muted on his end.
Just smiling way.
I got heat stroke. It's hot down there.
Just write it on a piece of paper and show it to us.
I think it's probably star six or something if you're dialing on the phone and you need to unmute.
Star six, seven, I think.
I think it's just star six.
Oh, it is.
To unmute on a conference phone.
I clicked X to unmute, too. It's not. Yeah. Sorry, Larry. To see him, right?
Yeah.
Okay, am I unmuted now? Maybe, maybe you want to mute me again. Can you hear me twice here? Is there an echo?
No.
Okay. I'm back in Iowa and glad to be here. And we, it's been kind of a quiet winter, but we've, we've been doing a lot of work, obviously, on the wastewater treatment facility. And we're at the thirty percent stage on the trunk of force main. And recently had a meeting with the city and present that and get comments from them. We've also reviewed the plans with the Iowa DOT to see how it's impacted by the bridge over on S fourteen and Sixth Street. Worked out some, some details there, and we'll be moving on to the next phase of design there. The only other thing I wanted to mention on the downtown improvements, maybe Sean has already indicated to you, we previously met with the, with contractors to do some planning going into the construction that's anticipated in this coming year. To update the public on that, Sean has plans to schedule a meeting with the Public Information at five o'clock before the next council meeting on March eighth to inform the public about what's going to happen in twenty twenty-one. So with that, if you've got any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Counsel, anything? Thanks, Larry. I'm glad you got your audio fixed. We can hear from you.
Thank you.
Okay. And with that, is there anything else before we adjourn? We'll adjourn. Dane and Jason, all those in favor of adjournment, please say aye. Please say aye. We adjourn. Thanks, everyone.
Good day, everybody.